I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British States, one nation, under each and universal liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we remain standing for Mr. Anthony Demore, Director of Pupil Personnel Services from 1974 to 1998, who passed away on January 1st, 2018. Thank you, everyone. 4.0 Presentations, we start tonight with 4.1, A Public Hearing on Updates to the Lancaster Central School District Code of Conduct. Also, before we begin, I'd like to welcome Jordan Ziegles, who is a representative from Assemblywoman Monica Wallace's office. Thank you for being here, Mr. Ziegles. So, Dr. Karini will start the presentation, and Dr. Karini will, if that's all right, will take a seat in the front row?
Well, good evening. We have been at this project for some time, and I'd like to tonight introduce the members of the committee that worked on this, these updates for the Code of Conduct. So, from the end, Mr. Hare, Assistant Principal at Williams Street; Dr. Kufel, Director of Secondary Education; Mrs. Marzinali, Principal of Como Park School; Mrs. Lackey, Assistant Principal at the high school; John Armstrong, put his two cents in, Director of Special Education; Mr. Bindeman, Assistant Principal at the middle school; and Mrs. Bruce, who is in charge of all of the IT and technology, so if this doesn't work tonight, we're going to be calling on her; and Mrs. Marchioli, Director of Elementary Education. So, with that, the Code of Conduct is required to be updated every five years. So, we got started on this last spring, and we sent the document, the old document, to Policy Services at BOSI's and had them take a look at it and see what was going on, see if there was something that was glaring. And they took a couple of months to take a look at it and sent it back to us, and so we began work on there. And the committee, as a group, started in June 2017. So, we worked throughout the summer, and then we worked into the fall, and we're required to do a public presentation of this code to you and to the community. So, I'm going to very quickly go through an overview of what we did. I'm not going to get into specifics. If you have questions, just ask, but these are the updates. There was a ton of mission statements, and we decided we're one district, this is the district policy, this is the overarching district policy. Each building has their own set of rules and regulations that they do, but they all fall under this Code of Conduct. So, we combined the mission statements into one district statement. We added some definitions, and this was based on recommendations by our attorney and based on recommendations from Policy Services. Cyberbullying wasn't an existing term the last time this hour was done. Educational process, visitors, gender, gender expression, gender identity, all of these things are emergent terms of late. Student rights and responsibilities, we've talked about. Each of them is building specific, but we have some overarching statements in the general policy. And then there's some updates, some verbiage updates and clarifications, some of the things were not really clear, and so we just cleaned up the language a bit. And then the expectation for Dignity Act coordinators, there weren't Dignity Act coordinators the last time we did the policy, so we put those in. Student conduct and dress, if you remember the old policy, if you ever looked at the old policy, there were a lot of pictures of kids and what they should look like and what they shouldn't look like. Again, we took it generally, and we leave it to the buildings to come up with those specific, these are the specific things, for buildings, for an elementary school student or a high school student. We had some inclusion of some specific references to off-campus behavior, because we had some issues that have come up in the past couple of years regarding off-campus behavior and how do we deal with it specifically in terms of, not punishment so much, but just how do we deal with it? And so, we addressed that in the policy. The AUP, the new policies around all of our technology, was included in here. And then fighting harassment, fighting and harassment, we went back to the DASSA regulations, and we tried to get the language so that it was aligned with DASSA. Again, all of these things are emergent within the past five years. Medications, there are certain medications that students are required to have or can have now, and they can carry them on their person, so we make that very specific within the policy, what's allowed, what's not allowed. Academic dishonesty, the longer we have technology, the more likely we're going to have different types of issues of academic dishonesty, and so we addressed those specifically from a technology viewpoint in the code. We talked about student visitors. There's sometimes a lot of people knocking on the doors to come and visit during the school year, so we wanted to clarify that, make sure that was clear. And then substance abuse, we included statements such as E-cigs and any illicit substance. I can't tell you how long we spent on that bullet. That was really a big deal, and Mr. Bindeman specifically brought some language on that so that we could finally come to some conclusions on that, any substance prohibited by New York State law. And then student searches, we needed to have clarifying language based on our legal advice on that specifically. And then, how do we release students to parents or others? So, we needed to be specific about that. So, there's a piece of the document that talks about dissemination. This is part of the dissemination that's also going to go on the website, and basically, those are our updates for the Code of Conduct. Are there any questions that you have? Fabulous. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Karini. Return to the, let's return. Okay, next, we have a presentation, 4.2, of the Sholley Kids Coffee Shop.
I'll just introduce myself. I'm Ms. Walsh. I'm one of the school-based educators here at Johnny Sholley, and I'm Cheryl Walsh, and also kind of a teaching college student. And while we're presenting, our children are hard at work making their beverages, and they'll be coming in to serve you during our presentation.
Just before we start the actual presentation, we, Ms. Walsh and I wanted to kind of share how this whole thing got started. So, we both work really hard with our children on social skills, fundamental skills that all kids need to know, and we found that our kids are really good at scripting conversations in the therapy room, they're good at initiating conversations at times, they know what to do, but then we see them in the hallway, and sometimes they won't even say hi, or the carryover was just very, very limited. So, we wanted to come up with a functional way for these children and our kids to be able to go and take these skills that they're learning in our therapy room and transition it into real life. So, this is kind of how all of this got started. So, what happened was, as a team, we designed a goal, and our goal is that we are looking to enhance these real-life functional skills. Again, these skills are skills that we want our children to build upon and take with them the rest of their lives, because again, they're essential. So, we are building upon these skills of our self-contained special education kids.
I swear we have teacher voices, so we probably could have made them project a little, but... So, really, Brittany touched on it a little bit, but there are so, so many reasons why our project is so important. Really, the social interaction and the language development, it's so much more than being able to greet, it's maintaining eye contact, it's really functional life skills that our kids just need for everyday life. Who doesn't love a kid with good manners? So, that's also a part of it, saying please, saying thank you, really practicing that without maybe their mom or dad saying, hey, make sure you say thank you or say please after this. It really is a self-confidence booster. We started the coffee shop not that long ago, and to see the smiles on our kids' faces, it's like the coolest thing ever. As a teacher, as a therapist, as an adult, as a person, it's great to see how excited they are to do this, how happy they are to come to school in the morning when they know it's happening. It is great integration of the self-contained students along with their typical peers. Sometimes our kiddos, you know, stay in their classroom, or they don't get to integrate as much as we would like them to. So, this is really a great, it's building a great school community for our kids to interact with their typical age peers. It really is the transfer of skills. As therapists, we were really struggling, and we were thinking there has to be a better way that our kids are practicing their skills that are functional. It's not just looking at me and knowing they have to do it because I'm sitting in front of them, but really being able to see them practice it on their own. Helping the school community, there's just so many great things. It's really promoting recognition and acceptance of differences, teaching our kids that to be different is absolutely okay. And even if you are different, you're special. Everyone has their own differences, and it's great. It's really building that, that community. Again, building real-world application of skills. It's great that they can greet, and they can take turns, and they can say the things we want them to say in a therapy setting, but to see them doing it in the hallway and to see them interacting with their teachers and their peers, and hopefully even carrying it outside of school, to a restaurant or to a playdate. I mean, those are things that we need. Every adult needs, every human needs these skills. Yeah, and it's really providing a really fun school atmosphere, not just for our kids, but for our teachers. Our faculty this morning was so excited to get their beverages from the kids. It was so cool to see our kids integrating with the teachers, maybe teachers that they've never seen or that they won't have, but really kind of just, you know, talking with them and getting to know them a little bit more other than, you know, just passing in the hallway.
So, what is the Sholley Kids Coffee Shop? So, this is an actual rolling cart. Beverages offered, our coffee, tea, hot chocolate, bottled water, we have options of sugar, creamer, honey, and each child has their own specific job in the classroom. So, it's kind of like an assembly line, and it's amazing to see them working together. It's 50 cents for all beverages, and it's going to be one-time monthly per grade level. So, again, with school closed on Friday, we had our first coffee shop today, and it was incredible to watch. Grade K-1 will be the first Friday of the month, and then our grade 2 and 3 is the third Friday, and we also have, of course, all of our special area teachers involved in this as well.
So, who does this involve? It is Mrs. Anderson's second and third-grade self-contained students, and it really is giving our self-contained kindergarten and first grade something really positive to look forward to as they get older and they move up the grade levels. It is our third-grade ambassadors, which has been really great, you know, they are given a special leadership role in the school, and this has just added to their repertoire of things that they're doing. So, this is really great to see them being a part of it. Mrs. Anderson, who is the self-contained second and third-grade teacher; Mrs. Waldron, myself, Ms. Walsh; Mrs. St. John, who is our school social worker; and Mrs. Green, our fabulous principal, who has been a great support along the way.
So, again, this amazing adventure began today, but we have been prepping for it for a very long time. So, again, we brought the idea to Mrs. Green, and she was completely supportive, which has been amazing, because the school community has been just as supportive. We sent out a survey to see which teachers would be interested in participating, and I think almost every single one of our teachers is doing it, which has been incredible. So, again, the school community atmosphere definitely was thriving and booming this morning.
So, how will this work? Mrs. Anderson's students will give a verbal reminder every Thursday morning, which again is a really, really great way for them to practice their communication skills. So, they're on the announcements, they have a script, it's really working on, especially from a therapist aspect, slowing down, enunciating your words. So, it really has been, it's been very cool, and they're very excited for it to be their turn to come on the announcements. We're working on volume control a little bit, because it can be a little loud, but they, they are really enjoying it. The beverage order forms are put into mailboxes on Thursdays, and the teachers post it to their doors on Friday morning. So, our kids went along with an adult this morning and collected all the order forms. We kind of compiled them in a fashionable order, and we kind of got to work, them reading the order forms and going down the assembly line.
So, again, the beverage order forms will be taped to the door, we grab the beverage order forms, the children make the coffee, and then is the fun part, where we have two kids come with Ms. Walsh or I or both of us this morning, and we deliver the beverages. So, this is the opportunity for the children to also communicate with the teachers. So, what ended up happening this morning was there was a knock on the door, and in excuse me, the class stopped, and everybody looked, and then it was one of our students going up to the teacher and saying, here's your order, it's 50 cents. They do the exchange, just like you would in any other restaurant or atmosphere, and they left saying, thank you, have a great day, and it was amazing. But the smiles on these kids' faces were incredible, and it was awesome for all the other children to see the interactions as well.
So, this project started off just an idea in our head, and really, as you can see, has really blossomed, and we have a lot of people to really be thankful to. Our PTO has been absolutely amazing, they helped fund our entire project, they provided us with Keurig, they really stood behind us 150%, and that was a very cool thing. We were very nervous asking, and they were like, of course, whatever we can do to help. So, it was really wonderful for them. Our wonderful staff, like Brittany said, we had 100% participation, which is amazing. Not that we doubted it, but it was nice to see when all the surveys came in that everybody was on board and willing to take part in something so great. Our students, they are truly what drove this whole idea and made it happen. It truly was an idea, like I said, and blossomed into something bigger, and our kids are absolutely loving it, and we're loving seeing them so happy. Our amazing parents, Mrs. Anderson's and the student ambassadors' parents have just been absolutely wonderful throughout this whole thing, they've been so supportive and were very appreciative. And our wonderful principal, Mrs. Green, she, from day one, was amazing. She said yes, she was so supportive, she was so excited for us, and it just really allowed our dream to become something bigger, so we honestly could not have done it without you, so thank you, and stay hydrated. I guess it's like a good, a good plug, yes, drink water, you know, have some yummy beverages. But our kiddos will be coming out, and we would love them to hopefully introduce themselves, just so you can kind of see our hard-working kids, and I'm sure they're very excited to see all of your family faces. So, thank you so much. Are there any questions for us while we wait for our kiddos? Okay. We'll have to talk about it at our next department meeting and see what we can do for that, but it would be great if every school could have it.
We have some of the staff from our Sholley Kids Coffee Shop here tonight, and they would like to introduce themselves to you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Ethan.
Hello, everyone, my name is Sarah.
My name is Savannah.
Hello, everyone, my name is Jess.
My name is Casey.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, so, as we move on from the presentations, I'd like just to make a couple of comments. First of all, thank you for the update on the Code of Conduct, and as I revisited the Code of Conduct as well, I was reminded that there's not only a spot for responsibility of students, there's also responsibility of administrators, responsibility of parents, teachers, all the way down to board members, as to not only how to conduct yourself, but how to really get involved with the Code of Conduct and make sure that you're communicating with your children, with teachers, with administrators, with people from the district, so that we, together, as a Lancaster family, can do the best that we can. And that, that leads into the Sholley Kids Coffee Shop, which are several teachers and administrators and the PTO and this community school of Johnny Sholley, who, it's really born out of a love for children and a caring about children that is evident in the way that they interact with them and the programs that they initiate. And these are touching upon soft skills, we call them soft skills, non-academic skills, which are vital to, to every child, and a celebration of them and an implementation of them and an engagement with those sorts of skills is vitally important, and just yet another example of some of the wonderful things that are going on here at Lancaster. My message into, from the Board of Education had to do with engagement and communication, and that was to encourage people to, to get involved and be, remain involved and sustain that involvement. And that's not to say that we're not going to have hiccups and bumps along the road, but with proper communication of all interested parties, we can continue to move forward. So, these two presentations, especially the last one, made me, yet again, proud to be a part of the Lancaster School District, and my hats off to, to all those involved this evening. Anyone from the board care to comment before we move on? We'll have more time in new and old business, I guess. So, we'll move on to 5.0 Correspondence, and we received an email from Julie Casca on January 2nd, 2018. 6.0 Approval of Minutes. 6.1, could I have a motion to accept the regular work session minutes from November 27th, 2017?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 6.2, could I have a motion to accept the regular session minutes from our December 4th meeting?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments?
Sandy, you weren't here, because I believe there was a beautiful baby born. Congratulations. I just wanted to, I didn't know if the message was passed on to you, but the meeting before that was when we voted the veterans' tax exemption in, and I had abstained from that vote, and in the minutes, it clearly stated I had abstained, but it didn't state the reason why. And I think in the minutes, we need to be more detailed with things like that, just in the event, you know, just to be more detailed as to why. It doesn't, it just doesn't look, I don't want to say that it doesn't look good, but I, I supported it, but due to a conflict of interest, I felt necessary to abstain from that vote, wanted to reflect that. I didn't know if that information was passed along to you? Okay. Because it wasn't in the last board minutes either, so I just wanted to make sure that you, you were aware. That's all.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 7.0 Items from Staff Organizations, do we have anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
Yes, I just wanted to wish us a buddy of, after you stayed during the COVID.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Yeah, welcome back, 2018. LCTA is looking bigger and better things for this year, too, and Molly Dowdery, we would like to say a few words about things going on here from faculty level at Sholley, so I'll turn it over to her.
Good evening. I was asked to speak just a little bit about some things, neat things that are going on at Sholley. In the month of December, 100 third graders worked with a top mentor from the district office during the International Day of Coding to create Google Doodles and to complete different coding activities. Over the holiday season, students from across all grade levels created cards and placards for Veterans Day to share a Veterans Day lunch, and I actually have a chance to look at it, it was probably the coolest thing I've ever done on Veterans Day, to see the veterans pick up those placards and ask if they could take them home with them or keep them. pick up those placards and ask if they could take them home with them or keep them or say they were going to put them on the refrigerator. Teachers have also worked with the students to create some STEM activities and many teachers are using Friday science time to create STEM activities and work on STEM activities for students. Two of our kindergarten teachers put in and received leave grants, which they were very thankful for, in order to get materials to work on the STEM activities. There's many second and third grade students working as peer tutors to the primary students in the building. And the students are very busy with sort of the teachers. The teachers have been working, they worked at St. Luke's over the holidays and served lunch and put together baskets and, oh, and don't leave a basket to the juvenile diabetes population. So, just a little, thanks for it.
Good stuff. Thank you very much. The Lancaster Association of Service personnel? And the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Thank you. 8.0 board reports, anyone from the Board have anything they'd like to report out on?
I just have something brief. There's not much going on legislative-wise until this month, it'll kick up, we have a meeting this Thursday, but the Capitol Conference is coming up next month in Albany that I will be attending. Sandy, is there any way you could register me for that or do I need to send it to you? I'm sorry? Okay, it's February 11th and 12th. And that, I didn't get any more information, but I will get it on Thursday if you need anything, but that's the next meeting, so other than that, that's all I have.
Anyone else from the Board?
Just a couple of quick things. Last Thursday, we had the Erie County Association of School Boards Budget and Finance meeting. They came out with their first budget, which, you know, isn't too newsworthy, but the one thing that they did mention is that in August they're planning a visit from Commissioner Ilya, which in the past they've had for superintendents and, and sometimes the president or vice president of the boards, but they're hoping to open it up to a larger venue if she does, able to agree on it and having more board members attend. I know, that's something I know we've looked at in the past as people want to see and hear from her and she seems to be more conducive to listening to people, so that's planned for August, I don't know the official date as of yet, so. I also had the opportunity this past Saturday to go to the Lancaster Lacrosse Foundation's meat raffle, which was, seemed to be hugely successful for many others except myself, although, you know, it was a good time, but the, that was to benefit the Boys Lacrosse Program. The Girls Lacrosse Program is having another meat raffle, I believe on the 27th, but a lot of great things and adults putting in a lot of work for the kids of the district, which is, is great to see. Nothing newsworthy, but, but, you know, really nice to see adults putting all that time and energy into, to benefit the kids of the district, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Anyone else?
The only thing I'd like to perhaps steal from Dr. Valley, if he is going to mention this, is that with the, the bad weather on the thruway and the accidents and that backup and the closing of the thruway, I had heard from sources other than Lancaster, there were, there were school buses attending to those people and bringing them to the Garden Place Hotel and I found out those were Lancaster school buses. So, hats off to our Transportation Department again and hats off to our district for being a part of this community and coming to the aid of those in our community when, when called upon. And from what I understand, it was a communication between the Bowmansville Fire Department and our Transportation Department and others who perhaps simply knew that we would be willing to help and that there were buses in the area. So, again, made me proud to be a part of this district and thank you to those who initiated that assistance to those in need. So with that, I'll turn it over. 9.0 Superintendent's Administrative Report, Dr. Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Utic. I got a couple of things. I believe firmly and tell everyone that'll listen, which sometimes isn't a lot, but there are a lot of people, but I tell everyone that'll listen at least, that we have the best teachers in, in Western New York bar none, we have the best support staff in Western New York bar none, and we have the best administrative team in Western New York bar none. So, we have two examples that are testament to that, those facts and first, Mrs. Terry Adamac has been awarded the Assistant Principal of the Year in New York State. Well-deserved honor for Mrs. Adamac, congratulations to a great person and a great Assistant Principal. Also, Molly Marsonelli and Como Park teachers and support staff have been awarded a New York State School of Character. This is an extensive application process coupled with a culture that actively promotes kindness and caring. Explaining the award, here's what it says. "In schools of character, adults embrace their critical role as models, teachers work together as professionals and with parents and community members as partners to positively shape the social, emotional, emotional and character development of the young people entrusted to them each day. Students in these schools feel safe, respected and connected to those around them, allowing them to thrive academically and socially and be motivated to give back to their communities." So, congratulations to Como Park, all the teacher support staff and Mrs. Marsonelli. Before the break, I attended the Intro to Music and Business Presentations. Once again, students in our special education Intro to Music and Business classes did their semi-annual presentations for families. I know there's some people in the audience who were there, but it's always a pleasure to be a part of that. I think this is about the ninth year that's been in, in place. The presentations always prove to be inspiring, creative and uplifting. I've never missed this event and it proved to be better, better than ever before this year, so congratulations to all those students. Two more congratulations, Presidential Scholars Program, congratulations to Alyssa Deacon, who's a senior at Lancaster High School, has been nominated for the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. The students nominated exhibit exceptional leadership qualities and excel in their school and in their community. So, congratulations to Alyssa and good luck moving forward. Congratulations to Mr. Don Marchese, a high school counselor, he's also the department chair. And Mr. Marchese was nominated by the Air Force to participate in their Distinguished Educator Workshop in April in San Antonio, Texas. All expenses will be paid for the Air Force for this privileged opportunity to be the guest of the Air Force and view some of their operations. So, congratulations again to Mr. Marchese and everyone else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Valley. Before we go any further, I'm sure I speak for the Board when I say this is very good coffee. Like it's, I'm thinking 50 cent coffee, how good can it be? And it's really, this coffee's made with love, no doubt about that. Thank you. 10.0 old business, is anyone from the Board of any old business they'd like to bring up? Hearing none. 11.0 new business. 11.1, the personnel items. 11.1.1, could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes?
Hold on a second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 11.2 are education items. 11.2.1, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Special Education's Report?
So moved. I wanted to make a comment, I don't know if anyone looked at it, but you should answer, you've been very busy, holy meetings. There was a doc.
He's kidding.
So, yeah, I'm gonna, I will, I will.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 11.2.2, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Preschool Special Education's Report?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.0 business and financial items. 12.1, could I have a motion to accept the financial items as written?
So moved.
Any questions or comments there? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.2 is a policy adoption, 5640, smoking and tobacco use, could I have a motion to accept that policy?
No.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.3 is policy adoption, 7320, alcohol, tobacco, drugs and other substances, could I have a motion to accept that policy?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.4 is 7520, policy on accidents and medical emergencies, could I have a motion to accept that policy?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.5, policy adoption, 3125, website accessibility, could I have a motion to accept that policy?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.6 is a policy adoption, 5660, our school food service program, lunch and breakfast, could I have a motion to accept that policy?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.7, policy adoption, 7670, due process complaints, selection and board appointment of impartial hearing officers, could I have a motion to accept that policy?
So moved.
No.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.8 is the first policy reading, 6550, for leaves of absence, that'll be an action item at a future meeting. 12.9 is a tax surcharge for Lavolo Associates Incorporated and Marauder Enterprises, could I have a motion to accept that settlement?
Second.
Any questions or comments about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.10 through 12.13, if I could put together, these are all contracts with school districts for health and human services initiatives. Does anyone have a problem with that? Could I have a motion to accept those contracts?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Did you get that, Mrs. Janik? I sort of cut off Mrs. Janik. Sorry about that. 12.14 is change orders, could I have a motion to accept the change orders?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.15 is the food service operating reports for November 2017, could I have a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
No.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.16 is a donation acceptance from the Hillview PTO and this is for the purchase, a very generous purchase of three water bottle filling stations, which are those stations where you put your empty water bottle in and it'll fill it up to the exact amount. It's a very generous donation, could I have a motion to accept that donation?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.17 and 12.18 are donations from two families, the Zinski family and the Heckler family.
Can we talk about this?
Sure, absolutely. It's a wonderful thing. Letters from both of these families offering to pay past due lunch balances for some of our elementary schools and one was born out of a conversation with a four-year-old who is a future Lancaster student and wanted to help his kindergarten friends, which was very sweet and very, very, very heartwarming. So, I enthusiastically support these donations. Other comments, Mrs. Christopher?
I found this class, actually, both these families, the one doesn't even have our district yet.
Right.
Like you said, it's four years old, doesn't even attend kindergarten yet and this, just amazing, just absolutely amazing. So, two, two elementary schools paid off lunch charges. Just ama, just amazing. I thought it was awesome. So, I didn't want to just approve it, I wanted to celebrate it a little bit, so.
And I'll be, I'd like to send a letter to them, each end of the dual family. And that's, you know, this is just yet another example of great things going on in Lancaster and, you know, I like to keep in mind personally that there's, you know, for as many times as we hear about problematic things going on throughout our communities, it's, it's not often enough that we hear about wonderful things like this. But even if you take a look around, you'll see there's a lot of good parents, a lot of good moms and dads and grandmoms and granddads and doing things for their family and for other families as well, so just moving, moving stuff, good stuff. So, could I have a motion to accept 12.17 and 12.18, please? Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.19 is the surplus equipment report, could I have a motion to accept that report?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.20 is our auction results, could I have a motion to accept the auction results?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
No.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.21 is a bid acceptance for a capital outlay at Lancaster Middle School, could I have a motion to accept that bid?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. This side of the table, wake up, let's go. Come on, we've got a meeting going on here, let's go. 12.22 through 12.25 are agreements with Richard Henchaw, Michael McIntosh, Michael Martin and Daniel Wiles and these are marching band contracts, which a portion of these contracts are covered by our marching band boosters. Could I have a motion to accept these contracts?
So moved.
Any questions or comments?
This is, this is a huge investment into our marching band, but completely support it. I wasn't able to make it to Disney World, but my nephew did and my sister was there and got to see some video on how awesome was it that they were there on New Year's Eve representing Lancaster, so, yeah, it's a little bit of money, but it's amazing and I'm so proud of them to see that and I did it when I was in marching band, marched through Disney World as well and to see that tradition is just awesome. So, I will gladly support this as well, so I will definitely make a motion to, to pass this through.
I agree. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.26 is a creation of an extra classroom activity club and this is a Lancaster trap team and this is something that doesn't cost the district anything, it's simply these young ladies and gentlemen who signed this petition need our blessing as a board and this is a Lancaster trap team that's similar to the skeet shooting that you have seen and there's quite a bit of interest from reading the petition, so could I have a motion to accept this club?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.27 is the code of conduct that you heard about this evening, could I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson chimes in from the peanut gallery, thank you. Second from Mrs. Tocinski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 13.0 is public hearing, we have no one signed up to speak this evening. 14.0, 14.0 future presentations, we have none at this time scheduled. 15.0 is an executive session and at this point we are effectively adjourned, so I thank you for coming this evening. Our next meeting will be January 22nd, 2018, a budget work session and meet with the SES Study Group and then we have a February 5th regular session meeting at Hillview Elementary at 7:00 PM. So, may I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation case number 02171436 and to meet with the district's attorney?
So moved. Second.
Move into executive session, thank you for coming, everyone.